It is now six o'clock. Please come to order. We have road call. Everyone here, Madam Clerk? Please stand for the invocation and pledge. Invocation by Madam McLawhorn, pledge by Commissioner Nonley.
Please bow your head. Eternal God, we come first of all to thank you. To thank you for health, life, health and strength. And we ask now that you come into this meeting. Have it to be as you wish. Help us to make the decision that will be pleasing to you. In the holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now have a motion for the agenda.
Say the name.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Lauren White. Let's vote. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Presentation.
Thank you, members of the board, this evening. Welcome, everybody, to your public hearing. If PIO would assist me with some slides in the back. They should be up on your screens. I'm just going to do a very short recap of our budget this year for fiscal year 2324. Next slide. In front of you, on your tables, is the Budget Message and Proposed Budget Ordinance that mirrors the presentation that was made on May 1st. Next slide. This was, reflects a fiscally balanced budget at $367,71,753, with the general fund portion being $221,378,226. There are no changes to this budget since the presentation on May 1st. Next slide. And, Madam Chairwoman, you may open your public hearing for comments.
I declare the public hearing open. Your statement.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. With this public hearing now open, Pitt County welcomes all comments on the proposed Pitt County budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address prior to speaking. Thank you.
First person signed up to speak is Brenda Harris.
Good afternoon, Ms. Harris. Please come to the podium.
I'm Paula Proff.
It's a pleasure seeing you.
I'm Brenda Harris. I reside at 7066 Stokes Elementary School Road. I've been a resident of Pitt County all of my life. I've seen good government. I've seen bad. I'm here to tell you some things that you need to know. We're in a budget. Every one of these people have an agenda. They want to tell you that they need money for their department. I'm here to tell you that 30% to 40% of your budget, because if $221 million comes from the general fund, you've got to find the other from federal funds. I looked for an old-fashioned broom. I could not find one. This is a broom, and this is a dustpan. I want to tell you that North Carolina is a political corporation, and Pitt County is a political subdivision. And Article 1, Section 8 says-
Excuse me, Ms. Harris. Could you put the mic to your mouth, please? So that the audience at home can hear you.
Sure. But we are a political subdivision. What I want to tell you is that you can't exist 24 hours without federal money. Right now, I know that the septic issues and one of the inspectors is a hot button because their septics are failing. I met with the state this week. They were not excited because I bring data when I come to the table. I know that the hospital, somebody that's inside, told me that it flew, it lost $45 million last year, and trajectory is $90 million this year. We're responsible because it was, it was not a sale. It was a transfer agreement, and it was this board that was supposed to keep it out of debt. What I want to tell you guys is that we can look good on paper. But if we're violating federal law, and let me tell you how you are. General Statute 153A is what county government is. 20% is shall, 80% is may. So when it comes down to the county agencies, guess what? They interpret it as, oh, I can do this because I may. But when you may, you forget about the Civil Rights Act of 1964. You forget about the LGB rights and senior rights and the Americans with Disabilities rights because you say they don't matter, and even transgender. But you have to say that it does matter, or you're not going to have the federal money. We're not coming. We're here. We're here with facts and figures and cases because we want you to listen. Now, I want to tell you one last thing.
All right. That'd be very nice if you include-
Liability is not off the table. What you need to know is that you only have immunity if you do it right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so very much for your time, Ms. Madam Manager.
Yes, next is Chad Suggs.
Chad Suggs, please come to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Chad Suggs. I live in Winterville, North Carolina. I'm just here to speak briefly about the budget. You all know why we're here. You know what we've asked for. I live in District 1. So Commissioner McLawhorn and Commissioner Floyd Huggins, I'm asking you to support the sheriff and the sheriff's office for what's been requested for many years now that has still not been satisfactorily done. I know you've been trying. I know it's difficult. But you guys run for office, and you were elected to make the hard decisions. So I'm just asking you to evaluate it and make those hard decisions. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your work.
I appreciate your briefness. Madam Manager.
Gentry Penner.
Gentry Penner, please come to the podium. Good to see you.
My name is Gentry Penner. I'm a lieutenant with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, and I live in Commissioners Colson and Commissioners White's district. And I'm just asking for your all's support with the sheriff's office budget. Thank you.
Thank you so very much for your briefness.
Brian Early.
Brian Early, please come to the podium.
How y'all doing today?
All right. How you doing?
I'm Sergeant Early to Sheriff's Office. I work in the Major Crimes Division. I also live in Ms. White and Mr. Colson's district in Grifton. Just ask you to support the sheriff. Have a good night.
Thank you for your briefness, Madam.
Priscilla Hicks.
Priscilla Hicks, please come to the podium.
Good evening.
Good afternoon.
I'm Priscilla Hicks. I live in Winterville. I work with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, Major Crimes Division. I'm a sergeant. I am in the District of Mark Ward and Mark Smith and Beth Ward. And I ask that you support the Pitt County Sheriff's Office because we are Pitt County's first line of defense. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate your briefness. Madam Manager.
Sarah Clark.
Sarah Clark. Please come to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sarah Clark. I am a Detentions Officer at the Pitt County-
Excuse me. We have an audience out there, and the microphone, they might want to hear us at home. So could you do some adjustment? Thank you. Appreciate your kindness.
I am a Detentions Officer at the Pitt County Detention Center, a proud member of the Honor Guard, and I reside in District 2. So, Mr. McLawhorn, Ms. Williams. I came here tonight because I witnessed the frustrations and struggles of our current pay on a daily basis. I also spoke with many fellow officers before coming here, and this is a topic we all feel very strongly about. As an officer working for the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, we devote more of our time serving this community than we do with our own families. We work challenging hours and unhealthy shift rotations. Even with straight days and nights, our bodies are physically and mentally subjected to high levels of stress and trauma on a regular basis. This line of work takes a toll on every person that works it. While this is likely true for most law enforcement agencies, the sheriff's office has the highest population of people in all of the county. We are responsible for protecting and serving each one of those people. We also run the only jail in our county, yet we have the lowest pay out of any other agency in Pitt County. We are painfully understaffed. We struggle to hire and keep new officers. And even some long-term officers have left to go to other agencies with better pay. Those of us who remain loyal to the sheriff's office struggle to get ways, days off due to understaffing. We have mandatory overtime days that still do not fulfill the staffing needs. Most of us did not join this career for the money. We do not do this job for the money. So the fact that we are here today pleading with you to approve this raise speaks volumes. Sheriff Dance truly cares about her community and her officers. It shows in every action she takes. She fights for us daily. She's not greedy, nor is she just trying to look good. She genuinely cares deeply, and for that, we are immensely grateful. Our county slogan is "Leader in the state, best in the east." I challenge you to prove it. Show the rest of the state what true appreciation looks like. Let us show the state what dedication, perseverance, and teamwork can look like. I could stand here for hours providing statistics and facts about our job that would make even the most financially conscious people consider Sheriff's Dance proposal more than reasonable. But to keep it simple, this career change, this career changes people. It's changed me, and I've seen the long-term effects it can have on officers. Our officers go above and beyond their expected duties every day. It's time for the pay to start catching up. I appreciate your time, and I truly hope you all look deep inside yourselves and take what we all have to say tonight to heart so you can make the best decision for everyone in this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jeremy Robb.
Jeremy Robb. Please come to the podium.
My name is Jeremy Robb. I work at the Detention Center. I'm an officer. In case some do not know our schedule, detention staff works two weeks on day shift, followed by two weeks on night with every few days off. This is on top of mandatory overtime that has plagued morale since the start of COVID-19. It's now three years later. This job is already thankless, overshadowed by the more public roles of law enforcement, and does not garner the same level of specter we deserve. This is not an easy role for make, to make morale thrive. It takes strong commitment, intense leadership, and a fighting spirit just to maintain the mental aspect of having to do the amazing choice we make every day to put this uniform on and do the job we do without any notice. One of the most important things to staff for mental health and just in general is the importance of the things we can do with our families. By being plagued with overtime and switching shifts, we're often, we get really from our kids. And you only get children, they only walk their first steps once. They only have their first birthday once. And not only are we away from them if we're working or too fatigued to enjoy them. It's been a long three years. Switching to permanent days and nights would at least offer the consistency we so desperately need. As I've stated before, we've had mandatory overtime since 2020, and here we are, three years later. The physical risks include heart disease, heart attacks, as much as up to 40% just for working the schedule that we do. And that's not including the high blood pressure, high blood sugar, cholesterol, and strokes. Personnel who work swing shifts also have increased chance of depression and mood orders. And these factors are on top of dealing with the population we have to deal with every day when we come to work. We are already at a disadvantage before walking in the door simply because our schedule demands it. With these factors picking away at us from the inside, we must also stay on guard at all times to make sure that not only we go home okay, but the person next to us does as well. There have been multiple guards attacked or shanked in the past months. We might acknowledge this profession comes with a risk, but we do not sign up to be soldiers for slaughter. This is asking a lot for someone that has no experience taking on class that they're paying out of pocket because you do, you need to go through jail school on your own now. And this is for a career that they might not enjoy or a community that shows them no love. We are already understaffed as it is, and putting this is making it harder to find quality fecal that will fill the slots we need. Switching shifts will also increase the candidates that we get since we'll be on par with the prison system. Since it's been hard to find and keep people, these people are already trained and want to do the job. They want to come to this county. And the budget increase will help more, attract more qualified candidates from other areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Devon, is it?
Deeks.
Deputy Deeks. The podium is yours.
Good evening, Pitt County Board of Commissioners. I am Officer Devon Dass with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. My commissioners, Commissioner Mark C. Smith, so therefore I reside in Winterville, North Carolina. I'm here before you today to discuss a topic that's been brought before you on several different occasions, which is a request for the Pitt County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center to get a 5% raise and a 5% shift differential. We are what say, what some say unseen heroes. Many don't understand what comes and goes within the Pitt County Detention Center. It's imperative that you know what it is that we deal with on a daily basis. Although we are not on the road patrol, we still have a job, which is to maintain the safety and security of the Detention Center while protecting and serving the citizens within the Pitt County Detention Center. We are short-staffed and underpaid, and it's imperative that we not only discuss the 5% raise and the 5% shift differential, but it's imperative that this request is granted. Compared to other counties outside agencies, we are underpaid. We have to work mandatory overtime because law enforcement officers see what the Pitt County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center is offering compared to other agencies to turn away from us and go to those other agencies, which I do believe personally is sad, especially when other agency is paying more and the population is less within that jurisdiction. Our lives are constantly on the line every week for 12 hours a day. And the sad part about it is that we come in on our days off to make sure other shifts aren't short-staffed but are safe. This 5% raise and 5% shift differential is to also keep officers and deputies. Joining me today is officers from the Pitt County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center. But before I take my seat, county commissioners, when the time comes, tonight's vote, please vote yes and take into consideration not what it is that we are losing, but what it is that we are gaining as an agency. I am Officer Devon Dass of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center, and we should all approve this message.
Thank you.
William Cowley.
The podium is yours.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
Good afternoon.
Madam Manager. Pitt County Commissioners.
My fellow officers.
Citizens of Pitt County. And to the person who keeps the light on in New Hope Road so there's a place to keep those that would wish you harm, to everyone in this room, our leader, Sheriff Dance. I am Lieutenant Brad Cowley. I live just south of Foreville on Highway 258. I've been an employee of Pitt County Sheriff's Office as a detention officer for 14 years and two months exactly today, with a total of 18 years of overall experience. I supervise 25 officers at the Pitt County Detention Center. We do this job regardless of recognition, without regard to our own safety, and we're all part of something bigger than ourselves. We abide by the Constitution of the United States, by the Constitution of the great state of North Carolina, and the policies of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. The world of law enforcement is constantly changing. We learn to adapt, improvise, and overcome the challenging of maintaining the diverse inmate population. We're away from our families at night, on holidays and weekends, while you enjoy the very blanket of the protection that Sheriff Dance and all her deputies and officers provide. The economy has really taken a toll on the way we get to spend the hours and days that we do have with our families. Many are forced to work several hours of overtime to make ends just meet. Some of us can't afford, aren't afforded the opportunity to work overtime, and we have to have a second, sometimes a third, source of income to maintain a life worthy of the sacrifices that we do make to keep the citizens of Pitt County safer today than we were yesterday. We have an overwhelming mental health crisis in our facility and the communities that we serve. Sometimes I prefer, I refer to us as the Pitt County Memorial Detention Center because we often house people that need professional medical and mental health services that we are undertrained, underfunded, and undercompensated for. When you call for the sheriff's office, you don't get 1% of our commitment. You get 100%. That's worth 5% adjustment and a 5% for night shift differential for the dangers mostly occur in the cover of darkness. The employees of Pitt County Sheriff's Office provide more services in a single day than most of the other departments within the county. To say that a position in the sheriff's office is equal to any other position in the county is to say that the protection that we provide can be provided by anyone else that works in the Pitt County government. Then I say, swing by our training standards office, pick up an application, and test that assumption at your earliest convenience.
Thank you. Deeks, Manager.
Yes, Rodney Jacobs.
Rodney Jacobs. Your time is at the podium.
Good evening to everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Rodney Jacobs, resident of Winterville, North Carolina, where Mark Smith served as my county commissioner. I currently serve as a captain at the Pitt County Detention Center. In this role, I have a duty and an obligation to speak upon issues that I feel affect how our officers are able to live their lives on a daily basis. From November 2013 until August of 2021, I served at the capacity of professional training and standards lieutenant. I was primarily responsible for recruitment and coordinating training for the Pitt County Sheriff's Office for all certified positions. I often stood toe-to-toe with local, state, and federal agencies trying to recruit the next best telecommunicator, detention officer, or deputy sheriff. On all occasions, I felt I was the sharpest nail in the toolbox when I represented Pitt County. However, my greatest flaw was trying to explain to applicants why they should choose to work for us, knowing our salaries are not as competitive as others. I can tell you through experience, while recruiting Generation X, Y, Z, and anything thereafter, their primary concern was always, how much is the starting pay? I lost many potential qualified applicants to local, state, and federal agencies because the amount of pay was simply not enough. I'm sure everyone in this room knows that money isn't everything, but we can all agree that not enough money means everything. I would like to ask for your reconsideration of Sheriff Dance's request to make our salaries competitive with local, state, and federal agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager.
Nancy Poston.
Nancy. Poston. The podium is yours.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nancy Poston. I'm the administrative captain at Pitt County Detention Center. I reside in Winterville. So Mr. Mark Smith and Beth Ward, you are my county commissioners. I won't take too much of your time this evening, mainly due to the fact that I was in this very same spot last year around this very same time, unfortunately, talking about the same thing. I want you to know that you have a loyal group of officers that work for Pitt County on a daily basis. We're called Pitt County Sheriff's Office. One day, it is my hope that our loyalty will be reciprocated sooner rather than later. The current stance you all have chosen to take on this topic is not going to work. We are already seeing the results. Think about being in law enforcement in this day and time. Think about how many people really want to get involved in this line of work. I think an important, an important question to ask is, how long do you think people will continue to work for less? Especially when more is within driving distance somewhere else? There is, this is, excuse me, this is a Pitt County problem, and it will continue to be a Pitt County problem until we deal with it better. What I can tell you is when departments were working from home during the COVID pandemic, we were boots on the ground. We don't close, not for any reason. In order to say we are leaders in this state and best in the east, that would have to include all departments. And right now, you are failing Pitt County Sheriff's Office and all of its employees that you depend on to keep you, your families, and your belongings safe. I would also ask you to reconsider the request made by Sheriff Dance for a 5% salary increase and a 5% shift differential pay for all Pitt County Sheriff's Office employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lim Cape Hart.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Chairwoman.
How do they do?
My Commissioner, Vice Chair Nonley, you represent my district. My team is here tonight, and you got a chance to hear from officers, some of the ranking members, some of the lieutenants. But I will tell you tonight, this is urgency. And I ask you to think about it with pure urgency on the need that we have. This is a cry. This is a cry that change be made to the salaries that we have in Pitt County. Now, let me just speak from my, from myself for a second. I've served Pitt County one-third of a century of my lifetime, and I dedicated to managing 95% of that time in all of those years. Pure dedication. What I'm asking you all tonight is to dedicate yourselves the same way. Make the sacrifices that we've made, or make the sacrifices that I've made. Many of you commissioners, 12 years, you have your time, and you're done. But the Detention Center, with the newest generation that we have coming onboard, they don't have the patience that I have to wait on Pitt County. But I think Pitt County has to come to realize the name Pitt County can no longer ride as a representation for our new employment of the 21st century generation, of the Generation X and Generation Y personnel. I beg of you, consider this very sincerely tonight. Make the change that is needed. And let me speak about one other thing before I exit. You know, I heard my officers speak earlier today, and I kind of look over what they had to say tonight, and it touched home. When they talk about the irregularities of work and shift work, I am the prototype of shift work. 27 years of shift work. I have diabetes. I have high blood pressure. And I'm sure, over time, my heart will challenge me. But not only that, I've been hospitalized twice for diabetic ketoacidosis. Where do you think it comes from? The way we live and work in shift work. I sacrificed that information tonight because I want to see change. And yeah, I'm 33 years almost in. And the sacrifices I've made is purely for Pitt County and the love of the sheriff's office and the love of what Sheriff Dance has done to make Pitt County a better place. Many years ago, I used to think that we lived off the titles, but we don't put that into action many times. And Pitt County is a very strong, very wealthy county, by the way. Let's not make any mistake about it. We're part of the elite eight counties in the state of North Carolina. And don't take that lightly. Don't miss this opportunity. We still have time. This is the fourth quarter. There's two seconds on the clock. I ask you, and every one of you individually, I challenge you to make that decision that may affect change for tomorrow with the employment of Pitt County new employees that will carry us for the next decade. Thank you.
Sharon Evans.
Hello, everyone. I am Dr. Sharon McDonald Evans, a resident of Pitt County. Chris Nunley, you are my commissioner. I left a funeral today for one of the greatest political leaders we had in the state of North Carolina, Conan Morgan. Where Bob Enrich spoke, so did Senator Dan Blue. The governor gave him the long-leaf pine. And I need to still be in Raleigh, but I had to come back because I'm supportive of the work that the sheriff's office does for this county. And I stood before you last year about this same time, saying the same thing. And today, I raveled over, am I going to make the effort to come back? And I had to come back because you need to understand that our deputies make a big sacrifice for us. Not only do they make a big sacrifice, they represent Pitt County extremely well. And I work with sheriffs all over the state of North Carolina and out of the state of North Carolina. And I know what I see in them. As I stated to you last year, Sheriff Dance is not a hidden figure. But this issue is something that doesn't need to be hidden. On one hand, you support- On one hand, you support her as being the first African-American female sheriff in the state of North Carolina and the fifth in the country. Need you to resonate on that. But then, on the other hand, you won't give her the tools she needs to be successful. Now, we can't make changes about the color of her skin. We can't change her gender. We can't change any of that. But one thing you cannot argue is that she is a great leader who advocates for all of her deputies all the time. So I stand before you to advocate for a crucial cause that directly affects the health and safety and well-being of our community in Pitt County. I don't have to live in Pitt County. I choose to live in Pitt County. It is a matter of utmost importance that we allocate additional funds in the budget to increase the salaries of our dedicated sheriff deputies. It doesn't make any sense to me, and I have three degrees, I'm gonna say like the children say, make it make sense. You've got smaller counties paying their deputies more money than our counties. That doesn't make sense. It's illogical. But yet, you propose a budget around $360 million, and you can't address the issue of the fact that the salary for the Sheriff's Office is already flawed. You know it's flawed, so do something about it. And I hope you don't take my passion for them as disrespect, because you all know me, I'm going to say what I got to say. But I'm passionate about this because we're tired of coming before you to beg for what is decent. Treat them like you say you want to treat all of your employees, so treat them well. I'll finish in a second. They are the backbone of law enforcement. They cover the entire county, not a section. They don't have an option to not show up. They do. But the question is, when something happens at your house, do you want them to show up in a timely manner? Or do you want to avoid the fact that they might not be able to show up because they don't have enough staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Wallace Moore.
Wallace Moore.
Good evening. My name is Wallace Moore. I'm a detective sergeant with the Sheriff's Office. I've been with the Sheriff's Office 25 and a half years. I am here to support my sheriff, of course. My Commissioner is Chairwoman Williams, and we have met on several occasions. I don't know if you remember me. I would reach out to you and just tell you to take into consideration what everybody has said. It's a united front, not to beg or ask, it's a united front for just a just pay. And this is an issue that, in my 25 years, we have had to ask over and over and over and over, and that, that really puts a bad taste in a lot of people's mouths that work at the Sheriff's Office because it seems like the issue just gets passed on. So I would like for you to reconsider and consider everything the sheriff has asked for. Thank you.
Thank you. Lieutenant Frida Godley Hines.
Good evening, everyone. I just stand, my name is Lieutenant Frida Godley Hines. I live in District Four, where Commissioner Holloman and Commissioner Ward are my commissioners. I'm over the Community Impact Division or Unit, and we, we house the school resource officers, the dare officers, the volunteer coordinator. And so when we have events in this county, you can look to see us, or we're there. And I just stand with Sheriff Dance, and on tonight, I ask that you, as in the prayer that Commissioner McGlaughorn said, that it be pleasing in God's sight.
Yes. Then the last person signed up to speak is Paula Dance.
Sheriff Dance, welcome to the podium.
I'll be asking for my five minutes as an organization. Here I am again.
You don't have that rule anymore.
Is that a problem? Don't I get five minutes as an organization?
Um...
Rules of procedure change, there's three minutes per individual. There's no organizational...
So it's a change now? Okay, I'll make it quick.
Sorry.
You all know who I am. I'm here every year, asking the same thing. And every year, the can gets, gets kicked down the road. And I'm going to be here next year, probably next month, in the month after that, until we make these deputies whole. All my life, I've had to fight, and I'm going to let you fight. I'm here on behalf of the hard-working men and women of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office who serves this county faithfully, with courage and valor, each and every day and night. Our doors never close. During holidays, birthdays, family events, through storms, hurricanes, tornadoes, we don't get to sit back and wait for anyone else to do it, because we are the ones that are required to do it. While we appreciate the 6% COLA, we still continue to fall further and further behind agencies in our own front and backyard. As an example, Winterville, with a jurisdiction of less than five square miles, currently has a starting pay above ours at $46,370, with a proposed 9% COLA, bringing their starting pay to $50,956. While Pitt County Sheriff's Office, with a jurisdiction of 656 square miles, has a base pay of $47,000, with the proposed 6% COLA, which would bring our starting pay at $47,524, which is still less than a community that has 10,000 people, and we have 170,000 people that we service in this community. Puts me at a disadvantage in recruitment and retention. I cannot compete, I can't even compete with Winterville anymore, because the starting pay in Winterville is more, and it's on track to be even more. Mr. Coulson and Ms. White, you are my commissioners. I ask you, as our commis, as my commissioner, to please consider my request, 545% pay adjustment, 5% shift differential pay, and the 6% cost of living. That would make us whole. That would, in fact, make us best in the state and leaders in the East. Thank you.
The public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I do not want to overlook anyone. If you didn't know that we, you needed to sign up. Yes, ma'am. You, you, please stand. You, ma'am, you are welcome to come to the podium. Three minutes is your time. Give your name and your address. We'll be happy to hear from you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Tucker Tarry. Commissioner Boe, it's good to be standing before you today. My name is Ms. Edna Ikerson.
You can pull it down a little bit.
I'm a resident of Greenville, North Carolina. This is my home. I was born and raised here in Pitt County. And I just, I just want to address to you the cut that have been made here in Greenville and all over the, you know, community and whatnot. And the cut on food stamps. You know, the people need their benefit. They need food stamps. The food is so expensive at the market. They need help. And then they saying they want to cut Social Security, and that's what I get, you know? And we, we need, we need help. We, we're gonna keep on walking above and looking above now in faith, because they cannot, you know, you know, they shouldn't, they shouldn't do that to the people. The people need help, you know? And then I'd just like to address and point out about, you know, I was looking on air, on television, a couple of months ago. I was entertained with, with the board, two boards here in Greenville and one in, I believe, in Winterville. And you know, it was, it was sort of destruction with the board, because prayer, I believe prayer needed to come back in the school system. We need prayer, you know? The board was, you know, I saw, I saw the mistake that was given in the board. I read sign language, and I saw that. And we need prayer to come back in the school system. The children need help. We know, we, Greenville is a gorgeous city. And you know, I'm a member of Capitol. I work with Governor, Governor Roy Cooper. I work with President Biden. I worked, worked, worked all the time. I'm a writer. I write them all the time, try to help in the way I can. I write, write, write. That's what I do. I sign, and then I date it, and I send it in. And Ms. Dance, I hear, I hear your cry about your members, Sheriff's Office. I want you to write, date, and sign, and send it up. And I think that's all I have to speak on, address. Thank you very much.
Thank you for, thank you very much. All right.
I'll be brief.
Thank you.
I'm Lee Darnell. I live in Winterville. These are powerful words, leader in the state, best in the East. It's always meant a lot to me. I'll just leave it at this. I will settle at this point for leader in the county, best in the county. Please consider that for these ladies and gentlemen, these officers and deputies. Best in the county. Our deputies would take that at this point. Thank you.
It seems as if our list has gone beyond even what we signed up. Thank you so much for your opinion. No more speaking. I declare this public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So if everything that Sheriff Dance asked for were to happen, how much extra money is that?
Madam, Manager, and we also have our finance person here. Thank you for your presence. Mr. Crum.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The 5% shift differential pay would probably add about $750,000, $760,000 to the budget Additional 5% on above that, I do not have that number tonight because the shift differential only applies to those working shifts, but that number would be much larger than that number.
I think if you give us just a few minutes, if your staff could pull the personnel line for the Sheriff's Office and multiply that by 5%, we'll have an answer for you.
I'll be right back.
Could you do that? Ma, Ms., with the, with the finance personnel?
While we're waiting, Madam Chair, I would like to apologize for my absences over the last several meetings. I was not able to be here for the budget. I had a health issue that prevented me from coming, and so consequently, I didn't get a full appreciation for what you all wrestle with. And so anyway, I just wanted to...
I'm glad to see you tonight. I'm sure that our colleagues are happy that you've gotten well enough to be here. We did excuse you, as we normally do, but it's nothing like looking at you in person.
Well, I appreciate your patience.
So while we wait, can I come around and wait? I'll call you back. Is that all right with you?
Yeah, fine.
All right, because you know I like to keep moving. Commissioner Huggins?
No comments.
Commissioner White? Commissioner McGlaughorn? Commissioner Smith?
No comment.
Commissioner Nunley?
No comment.
Commissioner Holloman? Commissioner Ward?
No comment.
Manager, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Not at this time, unless there are any questions.
Are there any questions of the manager to colleagues here on the board?
I guess we'll just wait for the number.
We will wait for the number.
It'll take a five-minute recess.
That'd be great.
We will now take a five-minute recess at the request of Commissioner Nunley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise the same. We will take five minutes. Over. Mr. Crum.
Yes.
You're on the mark.
Okay. We just quickly figured out what this would be, and we're saying it's going to be between 1.7...
Let's raise the mic on this for you.
It's going to be between 1.7 to $2 million.
How much?
Between 1.7 million to $2 million.
21...
No, 1, 1,700,000 and to $2 million.
Okay. Mr. Crum, Commissioner Crum, uh, mm, mm.
Coulson.
Commissioner Coulson, I'm calling you, Commissioner, Mr. Crum, babe, I'm sorry.
All right, so, so I had a respect for the Sheriff's Department and the fact that Sheriff Dance directly asked me to support the Sheriff's Department. I wanted to know how much that money would actually be. Let me digress. Can you give me a ballpark? What is our fund balance percentage? Not dollars, percentage. What is it?
About 32%.
Okay, all right, so we're fairly healthy there, but then, next year might be a drought, and we need to draw upon it. And I understand that. I came tonight really not inclined to vote for the budget that we're about to be asked to vote for. And for a host of reasons that I'm not going to go into, because I don't think it's, is, it would mean anything to the board, because it's kind of late now. And I was not here for all the budget presentations, and I was not able to hear all the, the discussions and the, as to how you wrestle with, which you finally came up with. And so when I looked at that, as I said, okay, well, there's certain things I don't like about it, and you heard me two meetings ago where I asked not to do an omnibus-type thing at the end. Tonight, we're about to do, it's, it's all in or all, or no, all out. And that was actually discussed, and several of you spoke on it, and you decided that you would rather keep it the way it is, and, and I respect that. Don't agree with it, but I respect it. So my question, I guess, this is going to be interpreted as being rude, and I don't mean it to sound rude, but of all the people that, from the Sheriff's Department tonight, how many of you are actually getting paid for the hours that you're here tonight?
Show of hands, if you can, if you'd like to respond.
None of you are getting paid tonight? Or any of you getting overtime for tonight? Okay, all right, so you're here of your own volition. Okay, that's an important thing. All right, I'm not prepared to make a motion, because at this point, to add to the budget without any, you know, discussion from the board itself.
Madam Chair.
I was trying to give Mr. Commissioner Coulson time to get his expressions out.
Well, I think that kind of sums it up now. I'm, I'm, I'm struggling at this point, so I'm...
You want me to go to Commissioner Nunley and come back to you?
Well, perhaps to me, but...
Commissioner Coulson? I mean Commissioner Nunley. I mean, Commissioner Nunley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year '23, '24.
Now, you got to talk so everyone can hear you.
I move that we approve the budget as it presented by the management and her team for fiscal year '23, '24.
I second the motion. We are still into discussion. I didn't know you were gonna make a motion. So we'll hold, obey the motion till later. Mr. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want, if the manager would do this for the sake of the public and for the sake of the sheriff's members that are present, what have we done in the proposed budget as it stands in terms of increasing the sheriff? Could you speak to that?
Yes, that I can answer. So the proposed budget includes, for the sheriff's office this year, a 6.2% increase in total funding over last year, increasing the total budget to $42,245,246. That's over $2 million in new money to cover operations. It does not cut any positions. It provides 6% across-the-board salary increase in the base salary, which will compound year over year. It funds a $17 million new sheriff's administration building, the debt service on that building. It continues to fund a vehicle replacement program. This is in addition to the $1.8 million that you recently allocated from American Rescue Plan funds for upgraded radios. That's what's included in your proposed budget.
Thank you.
For the cards in there. All right. Any other questions? Any other clarification? Any other discussion? Are you finished, Commissioner Coulson? I said I'd come back to you, and I want to do what I said.
Well, I just want to give you a recap of what happens at my company that I manage. We do not have taxation powers. So when we get new business, we have to go earn it. And if we don't sell our product for a reasonable amount, don't supply it on time, and don't do it on what the customer is willing to pay, we starve. What we did, even though we know that there's a 9% inflation rate for a period of time, not the whole year, but for a period of time, and now I think it's five or six or whatever. It seems, appears to be coming down. We did 3%. Now, the way we handled it is that we looked at next year, what is sustainable for our company? And so I would ask county, what is sustainable next year for the county without raising taxes? And without having to have property rates changed in order for you to artificially look like we kept the tax rate the same, but in fact, people are still paying more in taxes? What we do is, and we've done now two weeks where we've done bonuses to people, gave them a week's extra bonus twice so far this year and twice last year, once at the October, well, actually November, at Thanksgiving and then Christmas. And then we also did one in February, and we did one last month. And we're doing that because we have the funds to be able to do that. And we have to pay 50% taxes on anything that we make. So we would rather share it with our people. So, but I'm looking at from next year, I'm, I'm only compounding 3%. When you compound it at 6%, run the numbers sometime at 6% and see what happens in 20 years. It becomes a big number. And so anyway, I, I was wanting to object to the budget this year because of some of that, that stuff. And I've actually explained this to the county manager and a couple of other board members, and they listened to me. And I'm, I'm gonna say that it's given me pause to where I will probably end up voting for the budget, although it'll be a last-second decision because I'm teetering on the fence. So you better not, better shut me up.
Wait, then shut up, Commissioner Coulson. I request, I'd like for Mr. Commissioner Nunley to restate his motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the manager's and staff's prepared budget as presented for fiscal years '23 and '24.
Madam Clerk, did you hear the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Claire, it was seconded by Commissioner Ward. We are ready to vote. This motion passed. Eight to one. Thank you. We'll go on with our agenda, directives, and action. That's what's on the agenda, madam.
That's what you just did.
That's what we just...
That's what we just did?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, so we ready adjourn?
I'm ready for adjournment.
I got a quiet going over here. We make the motion to adjourn Commissioner Holloman and it's seconded by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, let's vote. This motion, this board is adjourned.